Brother William sent you in, would you pray for us?
Yes. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, for your blessings upon us. We thank you for our county commission, we pray for each one of these that serve, that you will give them wisdom. And Lord, help us to realize that we all have our feelings, but we do have laws that we must observe and go by. And Lord, I thank you that you have allowed us to live in this country. The country that we have, Lord, it's not perfect, it has a lot of warts and faults, but it's better than any place else on the earth. I pray for Brother Craig, that you will be with him as he deliberates and moderates this meeting, be with each one of these board members. And Lord, I pray for our farmers and our community, that you are blessed during the harvest. May the farmers be safe, and all the equipment's on the road, help us to be safe as we drive. Thank you for your bountiful blessings, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
It will be the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Alright, first thing, we need to approve the agenda, has anybody got any additions? We need to add to that? Not, we need a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The minutes of the meeting, did you review that, and everything looked like it was in order?
It looked good, mate.
Alright, we need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the motion's carried. The financial reports. Oh, there is one thing. Winston is here from the golf course. With that addition to the agenda, he wanted to go over something about some equipment with us, can we add that to it?
Yes, I make the motion too, and Winston.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor, the motion's carried, so we, with the addition of Winston, I don't know whether he's gonna be here or not, but anyway, the golf course, uh, equipment. Okay. Accounts payable? Anybody got any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion's carried, the financial report. Any questions on that? Need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion's carried. Alright, the only opinions, we got Winston. You want to talk to us, go ahead and talk to us now, Winston?
Sure, thank you. Right here in the middle room.
Yeah, you sit right there.
Okay. Give you one of these. Alright, uh. Good evening, let me give you a little bit of an update on the golf course. As it stands now, we expect to be fully open with all eighteen holes this weekend. We had planned to be open this past weekend, but the rain has played havoc with us. We've had almost forty inches of rain since June seventeenth at the golf course. We have nineteen greens that we've regrasped. About fourteen of those greens are in good shape. About three of those greens are marginal. That means that we have eighty, ninety percent coverage, eighty-five, ninety percent coverage of grass on the greens. There's some bare spots in a couple of the low areas where we've had multiple attempts to grow grass, but the rain has not allowed us, uh, in the low spots, to do so. Uh, then we have about two greens that have a little bit more of an issue. Uh, we still have spots for golfers to play on, and those issues will be addressed in the next growing season, and we'll get it all covered up. Those golfers who have played on the new greens, uh, enjoy them. They see the benefit of the new greens coming down the road, and they know it's gonna be good. So we're at least as good as we were when we, in the spring. At this point right now, we're at least as good as we were in the spring. Now we're headed towards better. Better's gonna be towards the tail end of the next growing season, is what I'm forecasting. As far as the equipment, splash purchase that we have in front of us today, this is for two greens mowers, Toro greens mowers. And to give you a little bit back history, not too much hopefully, but when I arrived at the golf course in two thousand six, I inherited two John Deere greens mowers that the previous, uh, manager had purchased, used. So they were early two thousand models. Inherited them in two thousand six. In two thousand eleven, I believe we purchased two greens mowers at sale and at the auction in Multry, turf grass sale. Those we ran for two to three years, and then ended up needing to replace the motors in both of those mowers. So we replaced those motors and extended those lives, that life out. So they're still operating on those mowers that we had. Now, the two older mowers that we retired, when we bought those in two thousand eleven, they moved to the Ts. Okay, it's important to have a T, a greens mower mow the T boxes as well. The option, the other option for mowing T boxes is a fairway mower. It's okay in the short run, but in the longer run, it will destroy those T boxes on the ends where we're turning those big mowers around. So I've held off on doing this as long as I can. It's always our goal at the golf course to be as efficient and effective with resources as possible. But we've lived out that plan, and we need to get the two greens mowers we currently have moved to the T boxes, and we need to get new greens mowers with groomers on the new greens moving forward. Does anybody have any questions? Did I explain that well enough?
Winston, what do you, what we running with the funds and the splash, I don't know. I don't know if we can be able to do this right now, but when you got to have this?
Alright, this, this is another part of the puzzle. As with a lot of items, supply chain issues are happening with golf course equipment. So these mowers are actually for February delivery. And he expects the out purchase to be five to six months out for any used equipment. So that puts us in a very precarious situation as well, because these, the T mowers act as backups. We have an equipment issue with a greens mower, then the T mower comes in and fills while we have the saw to get the parts in to do the, so now we have just two old greens mowers, and we're, we're forecasting to bring these in in February, probably February, early March. It would be difficult for us to continue this pattern and not run the risk of having operational issues. We cannot operate the golf course on one greens mower.
What's this down here, you got baskets, hour meter reading, estimate sixteen hundred a year, two thousand eighteen asset number?
Okay, the hour, those, it's basically showing that it's a used mower. New, four years ago, this sold for fifty thousand dollars off the lot. So basically, another golf course has taken this under a lease, and they've used it for four years and eaten twenty-five thousand of the depreciation. Now the, their, our reading is sixteen hundred. That's basically an estimate of what they expect it to be when they give it to us. These two mowers are coming off of lease sometime this fall, and then they'll go into their shop and be refurbished and be made for resale. We've worked with these, uh, the Wesco Turf Company. We've worked with them in the last couple of years with regard to the T mowers that we've purchased, and we've gotten good products from them, and I expect nothing different. If, uh, this is one of those situations where it may not be what we'd want to do, but we may have to buy it on time. If, if, you know, on future splash funds as opposed to what's just in the bank. There's, this piece is, is, these two pieces are vital to our operation.
If you get these two mowers, and you already said you got two more?
No, I have, in, as far as an overview of what equipment, these two mowers are must-have. There's a spray rig that we need to get at some point here in the next
Two mowers that you?
Year.
What you gonna do with the two mowers, that you gonna replace these with?
The two mowers, they'll move to the Ts. The two mowers that were originally two thousand model, they've since died. Parts are not available for them to be refurbished. We use all of our equipment till it dies, till we can't repair it, and it's cost prohibitive to repair it. So we've got these two pieces, then there's a, a spray rig piece that we need to purchase for the golf course. I haven't priced it out, uh, at this point in time, and I don't know when one of those would be available.
Winston, we ought to study on this a little bit, I, I mean, with what we already, what we got in the T splash right now, I mean, I think, we can, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him some time to think about this, 'cause I, I can't even commit to this right at this point right here, without some thinking on it a little bit. What, what, uh, how long are you talking about stretching, if you had to buy it on time, how long are you talking about won't stretch that out?
That's up to you guys, that's whatever the
How, what's the, what's, how long are these gonna last if we decided to do it?
How long would
Those are two thousand eleven models, is that what you said?
Alright, we bought two thousand seven models, used at the Multry show
In two thousand eleven?
In two thousand eleven, replaced the motors in them in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
The ones we got now are ten or eleven years old? The ones you're talking about moving to the T box?
The ones we have right now, that are moving to the T box, are fourteen years old. The ones that were two thousand one models are dead. So as far as time,
Pretty good life.
As far as time out, these are two thousand eighteen models, I would expect these to be still alive in two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-two.
We can get ten years out of them, pretty easy. When you got the Nova?
Yeah. Pieces are difficult to get. I'm not saying that they're not impossible to get, I'm saying that it's not the, it's not gonna change. You know, this is, this is, in two months, it could come back two thousand dollars more.
So if we could find the money in, okay, is it the next meet, next month, would that?
These pieces will be gone, more than likely.
More than likely.
There may be two others that'll come in, that he, that'll be the same or, or diff, you know, slightly different, but these pieces will probably be sold.
How long can you hold him up?
Can't.
Can't hold him up?
As soon as it, the, the used equipment market is crazy. He, he's saying he's never lived through anything like this. Anybody who's driven by a car lot for anything, you know, they, they understand it, so I'm
He's got asset number right here, that, that's the number of the mowers that you gonna get.
That's correct, those, I mean, we're, we're not, we're gonna be getting these two, correct.
Look, Ian, let, let, let us think on this about a week anyway. We got a, we got a meeting next Wednesday, Wednesday? Yeah. Yeah. How about a week, week with?
I, I can't, as soon as somebody, he's working against the board, as soon as a salesman sells them, then it'll come off, just like a car.
If you can get the man, I, I, I understand what you're talking about, if you can get the man to hold these two, I mean, that's, that's the best I can do right now, I can't
That's fine, if you need a little time to get comfortable with it and ask me some more questions, that's perfectly fine.
I'd rather, let's, let's go that route. That agreeable with y'all?
Thank you for seeing me.
They, I reckon I overlooked it, I don't know why, I thought it was on there, 'cause I, I guess I talked to Josh this morning, I just had it on my mind, it ain't on the agenda. But Josh wanted to go over what we, and it ain't on the old business, even, what we talked about, about, uh, Jerry Calhoun? Election of Ford or whatever? Is it all up to him to go ahead and talk? I mean, he ain't on, he ain't gonna talk long.
I really just wanna give y'all an update, um, so I've emailed, uh, Doug, three different resolutions for three different counties, that was done last session. Uh, looking, you know, looked over by the county attorney, whatever, amended tires, and, uh, as far as the, uh, the funding that will be required for this, I thought it was important to come tonight and let y'all know, make sure y'all understood that whether this happens or not, the, it, it shouldn't have an impact on the outgoing funds that the election costs. I've told Mr. Jerry several times, and he's agreed that if he were to be, you know, the choice in county, that it would be for what he's compensated now, plus the supplement, so there wouldn't be a difference there. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And as far as what would need to be, you know, happening would be, it would need to be done by January. Something would need to be written, and probably a good bit before January. Just to get, you know, get it in motion with a member. If y'all have any questions tonight, I just wanna be here just up that chair.
Let me ask you something, and it's, and I've heard it advertised in some of these bigger towns. Do they, is there a certain population of a county that they require to be an elected physician? 'Cause I've heard them running for superintendent of elections, heard it advertised before.
Um, I don't know if that would be population-based, I'm not saying it in, I, I don't know, but I would assume that they build that into their resolution.
Okay.
And made it a county election.
Like an appointed kind of person, or hired instead of an elected?
As, as it stands, all the ones around here are hired by the county commissioner.
Okay. Y'all got any more questions? Okay, alright, appreciate it, Ian.
Yes.
Alright, on the old business, is the commissioner's office, the proposed move, we got, telling to look over some stuff, Doug, did you wanna go over any of that, or?
Um, basically, me and Cody talked, we're, we're gonna try to move this stuff into that runoff where, uh, where the wrecked Ford was gonna go, or wrecked apartment was gonna go. And then we would, we would, I guess, address the rest of it.
But they, we're gonna get some prices on a temporary, like, petition wall, like these cubicle things that they put in some of these office spaces, there's one big room, separate, anyway, we're gonna get a price on the, something that you could move versus something that's permanent in there, and have a window in there, so we, we getting all that together.
We should be able to move that stuff anytime.
Is there anything y'all had? Any question on that, or any?
Just need to get them out there quick as possible.
Well, we got, um, a potential buyer for the, the building over there, if we do this. So you need, you need to keep that in mind too. I don't think the deal's gonna fall through, but you need to be thinking about a figure that we, uh, we need to agree on for that.
What's, uh, money offered?
They ain't made no offer yet, but That's my kind of people. I think we can work something out though, but they, they wanna, they wanna get the building. And it's as is. So they gonna do whatever got to be done and all that right there, if, if we can get this, so be thinking on it between now and, and the next meeting. We need to, probably by the end, we'll have some more information, we need to commit to it at the next meeting. Any more questions on that? Alright, next thing we got, did the sheriff's department, the lawsuit?
The open, there's no, there's no information on the open.
Y'all look over the report and all. Ain't, I don't think, there's nothing for us to act on, but that's just for the information. Cause they, that's all we need to do with that.
You talking about the, the new one?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, that's just, uh, just a letter informing what's coming, and, uh, so I'll include, include it for all of you guys.
Y'all notice the email's got, we're soliciting a sheriff on it?
Yeah, and that, there's some things, then sheriff's talking about that, there's, there's a few typos in there, I mean, they are a, a true law firm, it's just, it seems like they kinda rushed it. So we forwarded all the information to ACCG, and they've got a copy of it, and, uh, they're aware of it. But yeah, they use, if you look at it, they use the old, the list of old commissioners, and, uh, and Scott. I did speak to the sheriff, he, he, he all, uh
Alright, that's, there's nothing for us to do with that right at this point, you in the station?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
So they, uh, they installed the fueling pump today, and, um, it's gonna be here tomorrow to finish up the, uh, the fuel board. There's a couple of companies gonna give me quotes, they said at the six o'clock pricing, 'cause we're gonna have to have fuel tomorrow or the next day delivered, so I'm gonna pick the, the lowest one. But we do have to go ahead and get fuel so they can test it. Uh, the building is the last piece of the puzzle, and it's, uh, I got a quote for the, the building, and it's, uh, about fifteen thousand, which is four thousand cheaper than the last one. So we will have enough money in the, in what we took out to go ahead and get it done. So we will have enough money in the, in what we took out to go ahead and get it done.
But there was two options on the building. One of them was a, a little bit lower. I think it's about a thousand dollars lower. And it was a, not as heavy a wind rated building.
And he said it would sag because of the, this fifty foot wall.
It's lighter material. Did we need to sign a commitment with him to, to do that?
I just told him once we met, we would, uh, we would accept that. It's just like, like we did with the helicopter. I mean, you'll pay your percentage and then once they, uh, they get it complete, you'll, you'll finish up paying the rest of it.
I told him, and y'all will give me y'all's thoughts on the thing. I'd rather have the heavier building. It was wind rated. What do you say to a hundred and twenty mile an hour? Is that agreeable? Uh, we need a motion to, to go with that. Sign the agreement to do it. All in favor? No, what's, what's the name of the company?
Uh, Trinity. Yes. They're the ones that built the helicopter.
Yeah.
Oh, we got a motion, a second, all in favor. Uh, motion's here. The arts council, Krista Tickney come talk to us last month about that. And, uh, we told her we'd get back with her. Do, uh. Y'all have any input on that? What did you think about it? What I proposed for y'all, that maybe doing half, seventy, something like that. She's talking about it.
They make sure it goes towards that.
Well, until, until they raise the other half of the money, we don't.
Do anything?
We don't commit.
Kinda like a matching thing kinda deal.
When they raise the other half of the money, then, then we'll, if, if y'all decide, if, if the board decides to do it.
Where the money come from?
Come, what's the name of the, what's? Arca funds. And some of that COVID money, that'll help them over there finish their apartments. That'll give them a, a guaranteed source of income when they do that. I think she told me four thousand dollars a month. Would y'all be willing to do that?
Need a motion.
Did I?
Just wait.
We need to put the dollar amount, that seventy or seventy-five thousand dollars. I can't remember which figure I threw out there.
I think it's seventy-five.
All right. Is that, that dollar figure agreeable?
I made a motion.
And, all right.
Only be paid out if they raise.
They raised the other half of the money.
Yeah.
Who made, who seconded the motion?
I did.
All in favor? All right, the motion's here. All right, um, was there anything else about that that we didn't?
She, she just called me today and said that she was in quarantine, so she just wanna apologize for not being here tonight.
Uh, the, uh, we talked about, the next thing was on the new business. We talked about sheriff lawsuit. This is the, the other one. That he just spoke of and, uh, so we, we uncovered that. The purchases and the payables. What? This is with the sheriff.
Yes. All right, so a lot of the bills, you know, are going over there and we don't see them. But the problem that I'm running into, and Jill's running into, um. We're getting them and the date requested will say, like this one says September twenty-ninth. We didn't get it till October seventh. Um, the date on the invoice was eight twenty-four. So by the time we get them, it's already gonna be late. This one, um, eight twelve, it was requested. We didn't get it till the nineteenth. The invoice date was seven twenty-nine. And, and it's just example after example of, of, you know.
Their stamp with a check request.
Well, it's written date requested eight nine. We got all of these on eight nineteen. Um, invoice date was seven nineteen. So any of these that are late, you know, we've, we've had turnover and we're about to have some more turnover. Cause Jill's gonna move back home. She's leaving the twenty-ninth. So I know we've had some things laid and we need the late charges. But things like this, we gotta charge back to the department that causes it to be late, cause it's not fair to finance to eat these late charges if we're not. If we don't have these, um, especially our, um, local vendors like Moore's last, what we did this last time with them. We didn't have all the invoices that we paid, the ones we had, which was everybody else's but this department. And so that's makes our county more difficult, makes theirs, cause they're getting multiple checks. Um. I don't know. Most of these don't come to us anymore. We make it a big stack.
We talked about this last month. What was y'all at about contacting the vendors and getting them to send the stuff to us if they wanted?
I don't think y'all really decided on that, cause some of them were scared that we couldn't do that.
We were supposed to get something from the lawyer.
I'm gonna tell you what county attorney told me. He said, you need to do what you got to do to keep your business in order in that office.
We, we got to come up with some type of payable system where if they're not turned in by the Friday before. They're not gonna get paid the following week, because we may get a stack of ninety-something pages at one time. It takes a while to get them entered, takes, you know, then you gotta print the checks and then we've gotta get somebody to sign them. So even if they give them to us five days before they're due, there's no way they're gonna be paid on time. And then when you get them, and, and it's gonna look like when we're audited, if they just looked at the check request, well, you know, they sent it to you. You know, on eight twelve, what, you know, they got it in plenty of time, but like this one was dated eight thirty-one and we got it on September ninth. So it's looking like we're not doing our job.
Didn't you tell us you had emails to back these things up?
I got emails to back up when we got them. I just want it known that some things are gonna be late and it's not our fault.
County attorney made that statement, do what you got to do to keep your business in order. The other thing he threw out there was. You can give the sheriff one twelfth of his budget every month. You do that, there's no oversight in anything. I mean, that's, that's where you at, if you go that route. If he pays his own bills down yonder and you give him the money to put in his account. You, you're not gonna know what's going on. You're not gonna get the copies of those receipts we talked about that was itemized. If they go out of town or whatever, that's, that's where you're gonna be with it.
So he would be paying his own bills if we did the one twelfth.
That's right.
On payroll, on everything.
He'd have to do his own payroll. You would, insurance or anything that comes through our office, you would send them a bill for it. And they would send a check back to us if we had to pay it out of our office. That's not good.
Yeah, huh. That, that, that's, that's gonna be a mess.
Big problem.
Well, I don't see what the issue is down there. You know, if it's being sent now, why can't they go ahead and forward it up there?
The only thing I was told was that they wait, you know, sometimes they're later because they have to wait on the department head to sign. Before, you know, they've had stamps, but I don't know if they don't wanna do the stamp. I don't know.
We can't just call these vendors and tell them to?
But even if we get these vendors to send them back to us, we're still not supposed to pay them until the department head signs off on them. So we still have to send them over there or to whatever department. And then they're supposed to do a check request to get the department head to sign off and send it back. But at least we would know what bills are out there, but.
You just need to have a sit down meeting with him and tell him where we at with this right here, what we wanna do. Because if you go that other route, you, you, there's no oversight in, in, in any of that whatsoever.
Well, if you, if you do it, the department head that way, give them that much money to pay the bills and stuff with it. They spending money where they want to?
Pretty much. Yeah, there ain't no oversight. You, he'll be doing pretty good till about November probably, and he needs more money. I know how that'll work.
I'm just saying that, you know, you would hope that they would pay the bills. And I'm not just talking about that department. I'm talking about any department. You know, I wanna make sure that I know someone's watching us.
None of the rest of the departments in the county are running like that. They're going with what we've been running on for the last thirty years.
I mean, like I said, I know there's been times, so our office has been at fault. We've been short-staffed or it's just air. Everybody makes air and they're late and, and. It can happen anywhere, but I just don't like that it's looking like it's being sent to us and we're just not paying it on time. We're not getting it till a week or two weeks or five days or whatever later.
Well, this don't look good on the county if ain't paying the bills.
Right. Or if they're late.
Well, it don't look good.
All right.
But I don't know.
I understand that he's out of town. That's the reason we couldn't call for him to be here. But, uh, we just need to have a meeting with him. And just work from there.
I think everybody's got to understand that it's not just you get an invoice and you print out a check and get it signed that day. It, it, you know.
Well, I spoke with him. He told me it's a big deal about it. If he listen, he's listening. But, uh, you know.
Well, he agreed two meetings ago about the credit card thing, that he was willing to work with us and that's not happened. So anyway, y'all got any more questions on that? The, uh, the link with the mobile home taxes.
Yeah, this is that information that y'all requested from Jennifer. It's, it's got the first batch is like the ones that's still there that she wants to take off and run. And then the ones that you had asked about the move, the ones that's been moved, those are towards the back. She's got it listed, um, if it's been moved or if it's, if it's there.
All right, she had a, some notes wrote on some of them things that, uh. She got make offer on some of them and then some of them she's got right here that they didn't get a permit to move the thing. What, what? Can be done with that one. I mean, she's got, it looked like to me she had, uh. To try to do something to collect it.
Well, I, I guess what that was, was at the last meeting, you'd pointed the, uh, the ones that have moved. I wanted to see if we could, I guess, go, would, would we come to your office, Josh, and take out some kind of rehab or something that moved it? Try to collect back taxes.
It says right here, it says did not pull permit to remove.
So it's gone.
It's got, uh, can file with magistrate. Like that?
There's a process for amendment of mobile homes too.
Who, who moved it, you think? I mean, do you think a licensed person moved it or be hard to find out who moved it, I guess?
So I guess it would be whatever you guys decided to do and, uh, probably pursue the ones that moved it illegally.
Yeah, that's the inventory by the hurricane right now. Well, there you go.
Yeah, some of these right here, and these folks live around here, cause I haven't seen them. Uh, what, what exactly is the process? Well, there's about four of them that's like that. And it's, it would amount to probably. Probably about three thousand dollars worth. She's got, uh, seventy-five dollars of that being counted. She's got a seventy-five dollar, like a fee. It's not, nothing, nothing wrote down there. Is that? A fee for filing in your office.
Great. Um, I just got a text from Cody. He said he, he'll be here just a minute. He can discuss that.
Uh, we'll wait on, I mean, we ain't gonna wait on him, but we're, we're gonna come back to it. All right, um. Jennifer got a request, Jennifer, the Arca funds. That's page forty-five, forty-six. What, what's the deal on that there? She said she.
Um, she, she basically, if you look at the page forty-six, that's all the counties that, um, either, either elected to give the Arca funds. Or, um, employee paid or someone did, um. Decatur County does, is not, they're, they're actually gonna vote on that tomorrow, they said. And, um, I haven't made contact with any of the other counties, but, but it's just something that's going around. You know, the, the governor, uh. The governor signed off to give all emergency workers, emergency service workers, public safety and fire, um, like a thousand dollars or three hundred. If you were a, a volunteer fireman. So I, I think that's where some of the counties are, the other employees are looking at trying to get other funds through the Arca. So that's, that's where that's coming from. So that would be you guys to either, in the vote to, to do it or.
Is that coming out of a different pool of money?
It's coming out of that same Arca pool.
Now, the, the ones for the first responders is coming.
Yeah, and that's, that's the state got their federal funds. The state's giving that.
But any that you would choose to do for non-first responders would come out of the, the, other, the ones you've already gotten.
But didn't we give them a hundred dollar? Doing, but kinda the same thing out of our own pocket, you know, last year.
We got, we did a hundred extra on the Christmas bonuses for full time last year.
That was sort of what they're saying.
It was for, yeah.
Y'all wanna think of what? Is there a deadline for doing this?
No, it's, it's not. Um, and, and I talked to Jennifer about that. ACCG sent us a good idea, but, but. What they're recommending most counties do is, is, you know, we only got the one half of that money.
Yep.
Um, so if we get the second half, you know, it's, it's to, to, to see if you do get it first. And then if you do get it, go ahead and give it out of that batch, because you don't wanna give it back to the federal government. So that's, that's what their recommendation is. But like I said, you know, the counties do, pretty much can do what they want.
All right, y'all wanna table that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, we'll ta, we'll table that and give it some thought. The D facts board appointment, we got a nominee, Joan Simpson. Anybody got any questions on that? Or y'all wanna go with that?
Make a motion to the circuit.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, the motion's here. The, uh, resolution. To, uh, for the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission, that's, uh. Ain't that for that transportation zone?
It is. And, and it's, and it's signed pretty much every year. I went back and looked. They just need to, they just need to sign.
All right, I, I need a motion to give me permission to sign this, to renew it.
Second.
All in favor? The recreation thing, it came up at the city council last month and some stuff was tabled to me and the, the mayor. He recommended to table it to we, me and him talked about some, we had a, a resolution drawn up several years ago. That never got adopted by the city to make some changes. So the park director down there answered. To the board of commissioners and, uh, county attorney's looking into some stuff too on that right there. About maybe modifying that a little bit, cause in some other areas. Uh, I think we just need to table that right now. He ain't had time for me and him to talk. Is that agreeable? Just to table it for now? All right, Cody coming up. Was there anything else we need to go over?
Yeah, he, he said he had the GSP bill.
That's all, that's all we got other than department heads, but there's one, there's two things. There's two requests of, of some road work. And one of them, I think it's on, we, we gonna get us a, we're gonna go looking at it. One of them on Mount Olive Church Road, about a, a drain pipe over there. And I would say we were supposed to have worked on something down there. Maybe in the same area at one point before. And that's been a while back. I don't know whether this doing, I don't know whether it ever got fixed or is something else come up. Just making it, do it again. But anyway, another one is on Newberry Chambers Road. And we talked about this at some point in time, but I can't remember who brought it up. And, uh. But it was talked about some trees that was down on, uh, some private property over there that belonged to Bonnie Chambers. Y'all recall?
I know we talked about it last meeting.
I remember a ditch being stopped if I could, a tree would be down out there in the trees.
Was down there. Anyway, there's a fellow that lives down that way. He, he's telling us to can't, they can't just about, especially this year, about can't get in and out in no direction. So we need to look at seeing about getting something done with that right there. I don't know. Whether we need to get easement from the property owner or whatever to get out there and clear them trees so the natural flow of water runs off. But he's telling me that's what's holding the water up. And that right there was actually talked about, but I can't remember who brought it up at one of them meetings.
I remember that too.
I think, I think Mr. Jerry brought it, uh, I want to see Mr. Jerry brought it, because that would have been in his district at that time.
It might have been, but this, that very, I remember that part of it. And that boy, that fellow, he mentioned that very same thing, them trees holding up the flow of water, it's slowing it down so the water's backing up. And it's got it where it's almost like a beaver dam out there, it's, it can't ru- it can't even run off. So.
But there won't be any issue with, uh?
I don't know, you need to find out from the EPD, if it's the natural flow of water, I don't think there's no problem with it, you can't change that. But we need to look into that right there, because that.
Is that something David Henroy need to go out there and look at, or I know you don't like?
I mean, she can go, she can't even go look at it, she told me unless somebody makes a request for her to go look at it, before she told me about another problem that was somewhere else. So somebody got the request to do the us or him.
Well, that's requested.
And I, I think that foul a man, I think he the EPD man.
Tim, Tim Potter?
Yeah, he's still the person. We need to find out him, because some, something needs to be done there. Because it's, I mean, he can't, and he, he ain't one to be fussing and carrying on. I just happened to run into him, he actually, he drew me off a picture of all that right there and I laid it on top of this right here and I reckon I drove off and forgot it. But I got a map of where it is, I mean, I'll get it back up in the dug, and y'all feel free to look at it.
Yeah, I know where it's at out there.
Is it right there, before you get to Miss Bondi's right there?
Somewhere on that property, is what he told me.
So she don't care if we go on her place, I don't get?
I don't know about her, I haven't.
I don't know, but we need to look into.
We need to make sure we cover every, dot every eye and across every teeth.
I know it, I know.
But anyway, I want, I want to bring that up because the man mentioned it to me.
Well, I think you can clean out the existing ditch, you just can't dig it out, alter anything like that.
Some, I think we can clean the trees and everything out of it.
He's telling me the trees from the hurricane is what's caused the problem.
I remember that.
But anyway, y'all, I, I'll get that, man, I'll get the picture and all that he's got up here. Uh, Cody's in now, Cody, you wanna talk to, you wanna update us on what to do about the process of getting something done about the mobile homes?
So what, the job duties of the board of assessors changed by the resolution that y'all signed last week, or last month? So in the previous, it would give the board permission to make the owner of the mobile home display that decal. So with that being done away with, the board assessors have no authority anymore to make them display a decal. Decal, if a property owner failed to display a decal, if y'all remember several years ago when Shane and the sheriff before he owned Buddy, Tammy used to write all the citations and then the sheriff would deliver them to the, of the homeowners. And then Shane didn't want to do it anymore, Scott didn't want to do it, and so it's kind of fell by the wayside. But the only way to get them in court to make them pay that was through the board of assessors issuing citations to appear before the judge. Um, there is no permit for far as moving mobile home outside of the county. Um, there is a permit to move it within the county. Um, if the mobile home is sitting here as of January the first, it's taxed here, January the first. Um, without calling any names, I discussed one with Doug the other day, they told us it's been gone since two thousand eighteen. Doug, that mobile home been gone up two months ago? One particular mobile home, so in your packet it says it's been gone since two thousand eighteen. We know good and well it's sitting in this county list two months ago. So, a- at the board of assessors at the next meeting is writing more policy that if the mobile home is here January the first, we tax it as January's first, like the statute says. And that it is a burden of the homeowner or the tax, the property owner or the mobile homeowner to show where that mobile home was destroyed or gone before January the first. By either a landfill permit showing where they took it to the landfill, demo permit, something showing that it was moved outside this county. Because the bills y'all have in front of you, if the board of assessors starts writing them off, we're taking money that should have been collected by the tax commissioner out of the pocket of the county.
Well, Cody, this one I hear, I'm not gonna say why it's created, we ain't called no names. It was destroyed after the hurricane. Would, wouldn't it have been proper for them to come up here and say, hey, this mobile home was destroyed?
A lot earlier, but I, I don't know in particular what you're talking about. Um, if they come and told us it was destroyed by the hurricane, the board of assessors' policy is to assess everything at a dollar a square foot as long as it's existing in this county. So a mobile home that is completely abandoned, destroyed, you can't get power on it, is dead, uh, assessed at a dollar a square foot. And that policy was set up due to state law requiring us to put a monetary value on any structure inside the county. So to be fair, they set a dollar a square foot. So an abandoned mobile home that cannot get power is valued at a dollar a square foot. A house that cannot get power is valued at a dollar a square foot. So it's level all across the board. You can't even buy, buy a brand new utility building for a dollar a square foot. So even if they're using it for storage, they're paying less than what they would on a utility building.
So basically, where you set up now, there's nothing you can do about this?
Not with that resolution. Other than if Jennifer wants to try to put something, if the mobile homeowner is also the landowner, she may be able to do something that way. If the mobile homeowner in some counties, if the mobile homeowner owns a vehicle in the county, they have paid, put notes and stuff on the title saying they must pay mobile home taxes before they can give them that package. I don't think Jennifer's willing to do that, I'm not sure that's a question that the commissioners can ask her. There, there's some measures she could take, but not very much. The biggest measure was that resolution to issue and summons to appear before the judge. And, and that would go through magistrate court. And if they didn't pay for the sticker, then they, they could get jail time, penalties, um, community service and stuff like that, until they did pay the decal. But as far as right now, it's just like an abandoned vehicle, sitting back in somebody's yard, if they don't want to drive it, they want to put a tag on it. Mobile homes are treated the exact same way. The only enforcement you had was that resolution.
But we ain't gonna talk about some of them disappeared, there's nothing you can do about that.
We watched one, one day come into this county. They can set one up in less than three hours and be gone. They can tear one out and be on the road in less than two hours.
She's got wrote down here, it's got county or tax assessor can file with magistrate.
We could, we can't anymore.
Do we need to reverse the decision about the vehi- uh, the decals?
Since our report is missing, but with that, with, with y'all not required to display a sticker, that ordinance doesn't require, that ordinance that required us to enforce the display of the decals is no longer valid.
But if we went back and reversed it, would we have any teeth to do anything with?
Yeah, because then that throws the board of assessors back in the loop where they can take and write. We could give the li- we could give the list of citations to the sheriff, the sheriff would, if the sheriff will issue them, then he has to issue them.
What if he don't, I mean, what if you write back where he's at and he, they're not?
I'll say something, Greg, you remember, these two commissioners weren't here, but y'all asked us to have a meeting one time with the sheriff, which was Shane and Buddy and Brenda. And every time we requested a meeting to work this out, Brenda was the only one that ever showed up at our meetings. And we, we have minutes where we can show that. Uh, Shane never showed up, Jennifer never showed up.
So if you don't have the law and a proper authority put that way to participate in it, you wasting your time.
Alright, we can give the list, we can actually give some, summon us to the sheriff all day long, but if he doesn't serve it, then it's never served and never appeared in court. But that's the only, that's the only statute that allows the county to take action, other than five days on existing mobile homes dealing in county. If they moved out of county, there's nothing that the county can do, other than it sit on the books and her try to collect it. So, because if the mobile home's here January the second or January the third and they turn around and move it out of here, the new county's not gonna tax it because it's not there as January first, it's still sitting here as January first. And mobile homes still have the same, uh, appeal deadline, just like real property. When they get their bill on the bottom, the bill that says if you have a problem with that, contact the local assessor's office. Same thing with the assessment notice, when it goes out in May, gives you forty-five days from, forty-five days from the date of that notice to follow the bill saying you disagree with the value. We get them, mobile homes are hard to keep anything. If somebody moved a whole mobile home out in December, they get that bill, or if they moved out first January and they get that bill. It says it clearly on the bottom, if something's wrong, let us know.
But even if you give that authority back to our board, if the law enforcement's not gonna act when we give those issues, you know, and, and that was our problem. Like I said, this was three or four years ago, y'all remember? And we never could get law enforcement to support us.
Alright. The, the whole thing about the, the thing with the decal, I mean, us doing away with that? What, uh?
Only purpose that serves is the county not having to buy decal stickers anymore and people having to do with the mobile homes. That's the only thing that resolution serves. I, I, I still argue with the fact that if you buy your car tag, you still have to have that little sticker placed on it. What's the difference between it and a mobile home, in the state size, there is no difference.
But still the same, if, I, I ain't much on going back and changing something if it ain't gonna do no good to change it, if you ain't, I mean, what?
We can, we can request a meeting with the court judge and the sheriff and see if he's willing to honor the citations we, we sent to him, see if he'll issue them. And then we go from there, if he's not willing to honor it, then.
Y'all wanna do that?
Well, we gotta meet with him anyhow, so why don't we put that on him? Before too, see what we can get with it.
Well, let's, let's just include that in the meeting then. But it can't, I mean, unless he's here, we have to, that other meeting Wednesday, that Wednesday. I mean, I ain't, I ain't, ain't gonna be free to be just up for meeting anytime.
But I don't know if there's, there's one mobile home on that list, the guy's told me, year after year, two years in the road, that it's not there. I've knocked on his door with him standing right in front of me, and he keeps telling me mobile home's not there.
And he's that, he's living in it?
So it's there, what'd you say?
Is it one of these on this list?
I haven't seen the li- that list, but more likely it is. That's what I'm saying, is, is just because I walk up there, tell Mr. Jennifer's not here, or Rodney walks up and tell Mr. Jennifer's not here, doesn't mean it's not really here. Or it's not grown up, or it's not dragged to the front of the property, to the back of the property somewhere.
Alright, we, we got an idea about what we need to do, we'll, we'll see what we can work out, but y'all may have to be included in that meeting if y'all available. But anything else we need to go over? Doug, is there anything else? Alright, we need to meet, uh, motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion.
Can I say one thing, Greg?
Go. Go ahead.
Uh, on dividing the money up given there in department, a twelve feet each month, we can make that work. But I'm talking to Mr. Worsley, remember when everybody resigned and you put all of us on the, if you remember, we were paying overtime and did, and it was being hid from us. And because y'all were paying the paychecks, that's how we found out, because I was embarrassed to leave because we did not know. And there is, um, there is an extra layer of oversight when you all pay the bills. I mean, we can make it work, uh, but we'd have to have our own check, you know, and that's way, everything worked years ago. But if you two remember, we were paying all kinds of overtime and it was being hid from us, but you all were signing the checks and you all brought it to our attention.
Yes.
So, uh, it, it puts more load on you all, but at the same time, you think about every department, each one of us would have a checking account. And, uh, and, and I, I'll just say, checks and balances sometimes are a headache, but they do work.
Alright, we got a motion to adjourn, is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.